And I have asked for, or said that I would entertain a motion for the request to, for the variance request to build a storage shed.
I would move the acceptance of the variance request for the storage shed on the basis that there's practical difficulty due to the shape and size of the lot. And the proposed reconstruct and expansion is reasonable and is consistent with properties in the area.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have an alternative motion?
I would say that if they could move the shed further away. To keep the size that they want, or, you know, they've just got to leave it the way it is.
Is, is that emotionally that you would?
Yes, I was making that emotion.
If, if the shed could be, do you want to put some parameters on that? How many feet or anything like that?
Well, I don't know if there is, is there room to keep that size to be far enough from the high water mark?
No, no, any, any structure, any structure on this lot is going to require a variance, except for a 10 by 12 storage, water orientated storage structure. Anything else will require a variance from probably side yards, OHW, rear yard, it's just a, it's a tough lot to deal with. Now, maybe I could interject something, just, just an idea. What would happen if you did a 10 by 12 regulation and did something smaller up towards the right of way? You could segregate your, your storage.
So your idea, Jerry, is two storage sheds?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm thinking that maybe something. Can you point to the, take that, move it up, right, right in that area. If you could do something smaller, just in that area, to take care of some of that stories that these folks are looking for, and still have something that's 20 feet from the OHW that complies with our ordinance.
You're saying this structure would be 120 square feet or 10 by 12?
Yep.
And the second structure, are you saying, would that also be 10 by 12, or?
I, you know, I guess I don't know exactly what that would be, but I think that might be an alternative that would, would work.
How about up on the right, in front of the drain field, Jerry, on the east end, right there? Because they use the other part for parking, that is about the same distance from the lake as the, the proposed, you know, the lake curves there.
Jerry, if that was the case, they wouldn't need a variance because they'd be within a 120 for that shed.
I think he's going to need a variance for the second structure.
Right.
We wouldn't need a variance for the first one.
Right.
But would that be far enough from the road to put a structure up there?
Actually, there's, he could put it right on that easement line. The road is not a public road, it has been vacated. They actually own part of that road. It's, I think the only thing that's sacred there is the, the lane of traffic, so that there's, I believe there's an easement that goes down that for ingress and egress.
Because usually like 30 feet, you gotta be off the roadway?
Typically, if this lot were not, let's assume that Timber Lane Point had not been vacated, they would have had at least a 30-foot setback from that road also.
Would it, would it still be wide enough for fire trucks to get down there?
I think two-way tra, yeah.
Okay.
12, 14 feet. It's not like you're going to have a parade of traffic back and forth on that road, but I.
Mark?
Chairman, if I may, also just, you know, rhining parallel to what Jerry's saying, they have small shed structures that are approximately three feet by, you know, six feet in width, that could house stackable patio chairs, for example, that might utilize that space, or reduce the space that they're using to, to get that shed down to that 120 square feet. So that might be something that's also aesthetically pleasing, could be put closer to the, the new home after it's built. Just, you know, throwing a concept and idea out there. Thank you.
Still, I'm sorry, Peter, the, the, the time for public comment has, has ended. When we're in this discussion, it's, it's us. Still waiting for a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I was concerned about the drain field and its impact on the lake. In my opinion, and it is only my opinion, the shed will not adversely impact the lake. And therefore, I think we're getting lost on technicalities. To me, and of course, again, my feelings are that it's been designed nicely, and I don't see that you're going to gain a whole lot by putting it somewhere else on the lot. However, my motion died for lack of second, so.
Well, I would make a motion. I like Jerry's idea of being able to be compliant by saying, yes, let's approve the 120 structure and have a secondary structure for that additional 60 feet that you would need, and have that placed elsewhere on the property.
I'd second that motion.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Roger.
I think that would be a, a good option, because a 10 by 18 is kind of a boathouse size, whereas a 10 by 12 is a storage, you know. Some people think a 10 by 20, 10 by 18 is a storage, you know, a boathouse, and then smaller is your little shed, you know. So, yeah, I would agree with that.
I just need some help personally. I'm, I'm trying to understand what we've gained by that. Now we've got two structures on, on the property as, as opposed to one.
Well, I didn't see, it would be hard to come up with a practical difficulty in my opinion.
Okay, right, gotcha.
To approve something larger.
Okay.
But if we can approve something within our ordinance that says, yes, let's approve the 120, and have, and it could be, and I don't know, but it could even be a lean-to structure on the side of the house, or something that would add the extra 60 feet to accommodate some extra storage, and still be within the ordinance and not cause any other difficulty.
Jerry, I got a question. Crow Wing County is, they have 120 structures.
Water orientated structures are 120.
Right.
Being able to explain the practical difficulty is extremely important. I'm glad you reminded us of, of that, because we will be faced with decisions like this in the future. Are we ready to vote on that motion? If so, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Thank you for your patience.
So what was the motion?
Could you read that back to us, Patrick?
The motion was to allow a 120 square foot water, water orientated structure to be within setbacks as defined by city ordinances. A second structure of 60 square feet elsewhere on the property.
Ah, elsewhere in the property. Is that the motion, Marcy? Okay, good deal. Thank you for your patience.
And I'm sorry, I should clarify, and the practical difficulties were the same ones that were mentioned earlier.
That's added to the motion.
That is part of the motion.
Part, part of the motion, yes. Next on our agenda is a commission discussion of, guess what? Storage sheds. You sure you don't want to hang around?
I've read that already.
Jerry, or Patrick, do you want to kind of guide us into this discussion?
Well, guide you into it, I think my memo is, is pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
We have been permitting sheds 10 by 12 or less with, with zoning permits. And those structures are allowed to be three feet from the rear and three feet from the side yard setbacks, where they would typically, you know, a typical structure bigger than that would have to be 30 feet from the rear and 10 or 15 feet from the side. So we, we're, and we're seeing more and more of these structures being moved in, people are buying them off the street and moving them. Some ask for permission, some don't, some of them just show up. But one gentleman has raised the issue that we've been using zoning permits to approve these things on some lots that are very small, and his contention is that we should be going through the various variance process to approve a shed of 10 by 12 or less on a piece of property. Specifically Circle Drive, the old neighborhood that's above the hill. I think when we looked at it, you can see some of the same things happening just south of the city hall and the 80-foot lots that are there that are filled up to the 30 or 25% impervious coverage already, with, when you think about driveways and those type of things. And, and it, we've tossed this around back and forth. Is it a practical thing to require a variance for a 10 by 12 shed? When in, in most cases, the shed is providing a, something that's an addition and a benefit to the neighborhood, because it's basically cleaning up the neighborhood and keeping stuff from laying around on the lots, let alone blowing around in, in storms and, and things like that. So it becomes a, a practical situation. And when we looked at, you know, where this could apply specifically, these small lots and this whole area around city hall is the same thing. Any, any area that's basically provided or with sanitary sewer, they're, they're based on 80-foot lots, some of them are 50-foot lots, and, and they're going to be at the impervious coverage requirement, but yet those same people would like to have storage. Everybody, you know, kind of accumulates more and more as we go. I think that's kind of the success, a measure of success is how much junk you have stored around. But is it practical to require variances for a 10 by 12 shed or less? That's really the basic question. I, I think we can argue, and my memo does talk about the fact that maybe those sheds, if they're not impermanent foundations, they really don't contribute to the impervious coverage anyway. So it's, this discussion was meant to be a discussion, a starting point. It wasn't meant to be, this is what we have to do. But we would really like you to think about the practicality of somebody paying $250 for a variance request that may or may not get approved on a small lot where, quite frankly, a garage or some other structure isn't even practical, or wouldn't even be allowed.
And puts us in a position of saying yes or no to that request.
Exactly.
If I can, sir? Can I speak?
Sure.
So when we looked at the Circle Drive area, I, I also followed up with the owner of the resort and inquired, were the uniqueness of these parcels? They are provided with water from the resort and sewer throughout that entire area, part of the city. But the unique part of it is their water then is shut off in the wintertime because it's not deep water lines, and so they vacate. So it intrigued me that I assumed, and I asked, and they said, yes, at one point in time, those parcels were owned by the resort, managed by the resort, and maintained by the resort. So when ownership started happening for individuals, well then, at that point in time, they needed to have things like lawn mowers and other things to maintain their property, and those properties didn't have that kind of a space for that.
And no garages.
And no garages. Some of them, you know, as you go around and look, some of them have some decks underneath where they've got some storage. They've tried a variety of different, but we can all imagine, probably the lawn mowers were sitting inside the house, and then as they come up for the weekend or week, they take it out and it sits out in the lawn, and so do the lawn chairs and everything else. It's like, that's where we came up with the thought that maybe we need to exclude a 10 by 12 shed in that area, and looked at the other areas where it's practically hard also as a practical difficulties. Gets back to the phrase that we're trying to imply here, we're not trying to give blanket variances, but we're saying there are some lots that exist historically that have changed.
I tried to remember, I didn't go as far as researching it, but I, do we have an ordinance that restricts stuff just being stored outside?
We, we do have some, we do have some language as far as storage and screening in the, in the, the, the ordinance. Typically, we react to complaints from individuals about specific properties. It's not something that Patrick or I go out and, and look for, quite frankly.
So can I ask what you do? Just write them a letter saying?
First thing we do is write them a letter. Second thing, the, the last thing we're going to do is send the city attorney on them and, and charge them.
Right. That costs money.
90% of the time, we get compliance from people by working with them. It takes some time, but we do get compliance. There are 10% that will not comply with anything or anybody, and probably need to go to court in order to do it. Again, there's, there's a balance there. But in, in, in one area, this ordinance, it talks about, we want to not have clutter and, and outside storage, and then if we totally enforce this variance thing, especially up in Circle Drive, we're just kind of working against the ordinance. We're just encouraging people to leave stuff laying around.
That, that's why I brought it up, Jerry. You know, it, it would be nice to think that people who have a bunch of stuff laying around would put it in the storage.
You know, and we get into this whole personality thing too, where something that's valuable to me may not be valuable to you at all. And people, they work hard to, to accumulate some of this stuff, and maybe we should make it, make it easy for them to, to store it someplace that's not outside.
So is there anything that prevents, let's say we said, yeah, we agree that this should be allowed and not need a variance, is there anything that would prevent somebody from putting a storage shed on a piece of property? Because some of those properties up there are pretty, pretty small, and so I don't even know where you could put one, other than maybe where they park, which I get that that's maybe the concern, is then that forces people to park on the street.
And, and I, I think actually, a lot of those places have a place in the backyard where they could do that. Most of those houses, especially on Circle Drive, they're, they're tied up against the street. In fact, in some-
They don't need a variance to put a shed in.
Pardon?
They don't need a variance to put a 10 by 10 shed in.
No, that's only in water orientated structures right now.
All right. The reason we even permit, I use the zoning permit for those 10 by 12 sheds, is so that they stay on their own property, rather than trying to encroach on the neighbors and, and cause some problems.
Yeah.
That's, there's a lot of communities that, that look at a 10 by 12 shed and say, we don't even mess with them, quite frankly. We do that because of the, to keep it on, on their own property, make sure that they know where the property lines are before they, they cite them.
I think one of the things, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, Jerry, that we, the 10 by 10, 10 by 12 shed or smaller, ha, is allowed to be three feet from the rear or side property line. So that assists in, I think what you're looking at, Commissioner Weaver. If I may, we did receive a letter that was handed out tonight, and I wanted to make sure you each saw that, and that is then part of the official record.
So it's just a picture of two sheds being delivered, it looks like?
Well, in this case, there was, it's, how do I say, economies of scale. They, they travel with two, they drop off one, and they go to the next spot for the second one.
Oh.
But it was just one in this case. There was one earlier that had been in question, and-
But it, it's, I think it's interesting, in the last 10 years, if you drive up and down 371 from here to Brainerd, how many places do you get to buy a shed?
Amazing, too much stuff.
So you're saying that if these people want to put a shed like that, they'd have to apply for a variance?
Technically.
Right now. But what we're suggesting is to allow them to meet, or to, to be built as long as they meet setbacks, and they don't count towards the impervious surface coverage. And that's where they would have had to come in for the variance part of it.
Okay, because I would say that would get kind of spending if they had to pay 200-some dollars for a variance, and then probably, what, 150 for a shed for a permit for a shed?
It's 50.
50?
But then you also have to have each and every practical difficulty, and go through it each and every time there's one.
Would that change the permits on, for price on permits?
It's a zoning permit for a shed that's 10 by 12 or smaller. And that's why Jerry went into the explaining in the ordinance when you look at that, because building code really doesn't recognize a shed that's 200 square feet or smaller. And so when it, at 120 was decided 10 years ago, that that would be the, where we'd have a zoning permit rather than a building permit, so on a zoning permit for a 10 by 12 or smaller, the building inspector actually doesn't go out there and look at the structure.
So what is the cost if it's over that?
That depends on the value of the structure.
Okay.
We're seeing some 12 by 16s, we're looking at 12 by 24s being delivered these days, and they're basically, they, they carry the same premium as, as a garage does. But it seems to be that the, I think that there's some cost savings to do the, to buy the pre-built thing and have it brought to your property, is also the fact that it's instantly done, and it doesn't, it doesn't become a project for the rest of the summer.
And I do want to clarify for the record too, because it's even one that Jerry has to remind me of several times, this does not include a storage container. Let's say the all-metal structures, those are still prohibited under our ordinance. They are allowed for constructions for short periods of time with a, again, a zoning permit, but they're not allowed throughout the community. And that's longstanding again also.
But you could bring in a camper and got it out and use that for storage.
You're allowed to use a camper for up to-
30 days, you said, right?
30 days total.
But he could store it there.
He could store it there, but yeah.
What about those shelters that there, those garages that those?
They, they're, they're, they're okay if they meet code?
More times than not, they have a hard time meeting the snow load.
Is that, okay, I was just curious.
In the, in the definition of the storage shed that I have in front of me, it says that they will be made of materials compatible with the principal structure. The pre-built are not necessarily made of materials compatible with the principal structure.
Well, I think, I think you could, you could put a coat of paint that's the same as the house, and you could qualify as, as something that's compatible, quite frankly.
Okay. So again, we were bringing this before you for discussion. We'd like to make sure that, is something you want to continue to talk about? Should we formalize it? Do you want to continue the discussion? Do you want to kick it around some more? Or do you want it on for the next agenda to adopt, or? We're interested in your thoughts.
Well, just a, a quick question or comment, maybe a comment. In the years that I've been on the planning commission, I don't think, I don't recall ever having one of these sheds come to us as a variance request. Am I wrong, Jerry?
Or an issue.
Pardon me?
Or, or an issue.
Or an issue.
Yeah, no, we have not. This was, we're reacting to a complaint.
Okay, that's where I was going with this, okay.
But you, we just had one tonight, didn't we?
You have, you have a copy of the complaint.
No, the one we had tonight was a water accessory story, or water orientated accessory structure that is allowed, which is a different animal complaint.
Right. Kind of the same, but different, right?
Yes.
Different location.
We're talking about structures that are not water orientated.
The, the, the reason, and I'll go back to, the reason that the county initially, and the city after that, adopted the, the water orientated structure, the 10 by 12, 20 feet from the, the OHW, was that people were applying for sheds to, you know, put their toys in down by the lakeshore, and they were getting not allowed because there was setback issues. People circumvented that by bringing in a fish house and parking the fish house 12 months out of the year, and using that fish house, whether it was vinyl sided or plywood with peeling paint, which peed more people than anything else. So the compromise was to allow at least one struc, only one structure down at the lake within certain parameters, as far as setbacks are concerned. That, that's really how that came about. It was, was a reaction to somebody trying to beat the system more than anything else.
I think with this complaint, is addressing is the nuisance items, you know, like all of a sudden you have these small little portable sheds popping up all over the place, blocking right of way or point of view, or whatever it is when you're driving through these narrow corridors. I'd like to know personally, you know, whether or not there's any meritor can hold water this tort liability that is mentioned.
So the letter that you have is not the complaint that we received earlier, that we started this, just so we're clear on that, okay? I don't want to, because complaints are held confidential, we've talked about that on other issues, and so, but this, so this is a separate issue. And that's a whole, how do I say this? People say lawsuit a lot, and they have no knowledge of what they're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I didn't mean to call this the complaint, but yes, thank you very much for the clarification.
Just one more quick question. So all of the sheds that we see showing up, either are legal because they don't exceed the impervious, or they're just getting put?
In a specific area, you're probably right.
Okay.
And Circle Drive is a, is a, an area that's kind of unique to, to Breezy, where you have 5,000 square foot lots, and the house that's on that 5,000 square foot lot exceeds the 25% impervious coverage already. Those are the unique type of situations. The, the folks that are out there in the, you know, in the half acre lots and stuff like that, we don't have any- that, we don't have any problem with them, nor do we have issues with impervious coverage. We have issues with impervious coverage in some of those areas that have small lots.
Right.
The 50 to 80 footers. In case of Circle Drive, we even have some 30 footers, quite frankly.
And if I can just clarify, you're right on all that. The one question, or statement that we make four times a day for seven months out of the year, though, is they say, I've just bought a 16 by 22 shed, and I'm going to move it onto my property, and we say, great, however, how big is the house you have? And they go, I don't have a house on my property. And so we constantly remind everybody, you can't have a garage, a shed, or an accessory structure without a principal structure, and they usually are not happy with that. And I can tell you that in the eight cities that I've worked at before, it's always the same requirement. They just feel because we look rural, that that shouldn't be a requirement.
Well, I wonder how many people even think about impervious coverage when they want to put a shed on their property?
None.
None, yeah. I don't imagine they have people coming to you saying, Jerry, will I exceed the impervious coverage?
They don't red-flag it, I'll tell you that. Half the time, those, those structures are there already by the time they come in to apply for the permit.
If we're... Any other input?
Well, if we're gonna think about making a change, do we have kind of a game plan? What are we going to talk about? How are we going to talk about it? And what's the timeline to do something about it? Or what do we want to do? You said, you know, you're trying to get us...
I need to know, do you like what we're talking about as a way to alleviate a problem?
Well, one, one thing, one thing, and we, I violated my own thoughts tonight on the two issues that we had, one one way and one the other way. But if we got laws and rules, then we got to enforce them. And so maybe you two shouldn't be going out looking around, but if I go down and I see the guy that's got 12 snowmobiles in his front yard, and, and a camper trailer, and has been there for four years, now I would have, I'm not as close a neighbor to him as most people, but shall I register a complaint?
Absolutely.
And we would follow up on it, just as we're doing here, but rather than issue a citation or go through the attorneys, we looked at it and said, practically, is this the right thing in these small existing lots? If you recall, so everyone knows, too, the impervious surface rule's only been around for 15 years?
Probably a little bit more, probably 20.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not, these houses have been around 100 years. So, and it often reminds me of the, when the first garages were built, and they were built for Model Ts, you know, now we're two, three-stall garages, and a Model T garage would be a great golf cart garage. So I mean, things change over time, and so rather than say, this is the rule, you got to follow it, we're trying to say, let's look and follow some practicalities that's reasonable in a community of our size.
I would suggest that we think about it and put it on the agenda for the next month to further discussion, but we can all think about, do we want to do anything? Do we want to, what do, and so next time we come up with either a solution or a table, throw it out, or at least some kind of a game plan. You suggest, like, these four streets, or whatever Jerry has? Well, I, I'd like to go look at them, too. I mean, I've been on every one of them, but I, like I said earlier, I don't know any street by its name, I just know how to get there.
The, the purpose of this whole thing this evening is to introduce the subject. We identified those areas as areas that we think, and we know some of them have some, some issues with impervious coverage. I went through and I, I looked at Circle Drive, and if you look at that whole, put the whole neighborhood together, it's almost 50% covered with, with, by impervious coverage, and that doesn't include the streets, nor the parking areas, it's just the buildings.
Yeah.
And the other thing to look at also is that, Patrick is absolutely right, that times have changed. Circle Drive used to be, we used to come on Sat, on Friday night and leave on Sunday afternoon. Now these folks are staying there seven days a week, for, as long as they have water. The other thing that's happening up there is that some of those people are also installing their own wells, so that they're, they're 12 months out of the year. So the, the progression is happening. People's lifestyles are changing. I think COVID has accentuated some of that, too, where it's forced more people to come here, or not forced them, but they choose to, to come here, rather than staying in the Twin Cities, because they can work from home.
Do you think that guy has got a point, Jerry and Mark, that the storage shed is taking a parking spot away?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think in most cases, the, the sheds are in the backyard, they're not in the front yards.
If you look at it, that's what, maybe during the delivery, that's taking up parking spaces, but that's a two-hour maximum process. It's relatively quick.
So, so just to propose something out, as I was thinking about this, and then I saw these other streets that are on here, I know there are people on some of these streets that are, would say, well, not only am I up here more frequently now, I'm up here as a full-time resident, a storage shed isn't enough, I need to park my vehicle inside, because I'm up here year-round. So it just kind of started me thinking, like, where does the argument or the justification kind of end? If we say, well, we don't want people keeping all their, you know, lawnmowers and stuff outside, well, then what does the next person say that says, well, I don't want to leave my vehicle and my lawnmower and my tools, I need a bigger spot, and I've used up my impervious coverage?
That is a great question, yep, that we wrestle with constantly.
Yeah, if we, if we could approve pole sheds on vacant lots, we'd probably have five a day. And the bottom line is that everybody's toy box is getting bigger.
Toys are getting bigger.
My son said, when I moved up north, he said, Dad, why are the garages bigger than the houses up here? Said, that's a great observation.
And in some cases, nicer.
Yeah.
True.
But again, it was meant to be a starting point to talk. Maybe one of the things we can do is, is give you some, some ideas of how the ordinance could be changed, if we were to change it.
And maybe add some maps to specifically circle, identify areas we're discussing.
But don't most people think a 10 by 12 shed, you know, they're small enough from other cities, you just put them in there and kind of, or, you know what I'm saying? Is, they're like, oh, yeah, I can put up a 10 by 12 shed, don't need a permit.
A lot of people think that way. Then we, they call us, and we say, no, that still needs permit.
A lot of people think that because the shed doesn't have a permanent foundation, it doesn't need a permit.
Right, that's probably the better way to...
Like I said, we, we require the permit, which is a zoning permit, it isn't a building permit, to make sure that it's on their own property, rather than encroaching on property lines. That's the biggest issue for us.
What is, we restrict it to such a percentage of covering the impervious soil, okay, what's the objection? It's my understanding, you want, you, you don't want, you want to be able to have water drain down. Okay, well, if you're, you're up the hilltop over there, they don't have much water up there to drain down.
Well, it all goes downhill.
That's right.
Yes, that's a great, that's what we considered when we said, there's not a lot of dr, if there was a big puddles after all the rains, we would probably be considering some other alternative. But because there are not, there's not the drainage issues with our good sands up here, especially in those areas that we're talking about, that's why it's easy to suggest this.
If, if this were in one of the communities that I previously worked at, that would be a real issue, quite frankly, because of the soil types that were, were there.
Clay and puddles.
Heavy clay and, yep. And the runoff that happens on, on those soils is monstrous, and the, the sand that we were fortunate to have sand here, where the, most of it seeps.
Although on Shoreview Lane, I think it was last summer, they came in, there was a concern about the drainage.
Right.
So I know that some of these roads have been huge.
Throw it out to your place, right? Yeah. Isn't there a storm sewer in part of, kind of over by your place? No?
I don't think so.
Sure's a drain in the road on, below Circle Drive.
Yeah, there is actually, because I saw a cat coming out of it.
At least it wasn't a bear, right?
Does our, our impervious coverage take into account the fact that we live on sand? I mean, we have a more liberal, okay.
No, it's, it's pretty, that's pretty uniform. And, and quite frankly, I think it probably comes from state shoreline ordinances, where they tell you that if you're within 1,000 feet of the lake, you should be at 25%. They're, they're really talking about new developments versus redevelopment and/or older areas.
So we don't have to be super concerned about impervious coverage when it comes to the, the sheds? I mean, that isn't a...
Do they, do they contribute a significant amount of runoff? No.
Okay.
Especially with the soils that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Now, like I said, in one of my previous communities that I worked at, that might be a, a big issue.
So could we, in the next meeting, have some of your, both of your feedback on what you were envisioning? What this could look like if we said, hey, let's take a look at this ordinance and see what we can write differently? Is that something you could propose back to us to help guide us through that?
I'm, yeah, I'm thinking we could do that.
So you're thinking like a R3 existing, it would be a 6 by 6, I'm just thinking up, a 6 by 6 shed, or instead of a 10 by 12? I don't know.
I'm thinking that it's probably 10 by 12, because it's not practical to have anything smaller, quite frankly. And that's what's being sold.
Yeah. What size again? What size? You, you mentioned what size?
10 by 12. 10 by 12.
We're using that because we already have an existing part of our ordinance that says those are excluded, and they are in specifically a zoning permit.
Mark, in, in your experience as a developer, do you get kind of comments from your clients, whatever, and, and do you have some kind of input as to what you think we might do?
I've seen some of the composite or plastic assemble-yourself sheds that come in such sizes as 5 by 5 or 6 by 6, that are literally snapped together with little to no screws, nails, or hardware, except for the operating latches. They're easily transportable, they can be placed on a green treated deck, and anchored as such if you were concerned about high winds, such as we might get up here in Breezy That would be, I guess, you know, the exposure that I've received, I, I think that people don't typically tend to build 10 by 12. I think they generally go much larger and taller, for that matter, because it suits storing that camper, boat, the other toys, four-wheelers, what have you. So if, if anything, of the new houses we've constructed, everyone has asked us, what size of an accessory structure can they build on their lot maximum, not in a minimum effort?
And, and I don't think we're talking about new areas where there is the ability to, to construct that accessory structure. We're talking about some areas that are somewhat constricted, that are totally built up. Houses are on property lines, some of them are actually probably on the street. But yet people are using them as their own, and, and want to keep them up and maintain them, and, and they do accumulate stuff.
You know, it might be something to note, though, that instead of expanding that deck that they have on the already, you know, constricting lot size, let's not do that, let's find something where they can store their, you know, their personals. So that might be one of those practical difficulties, is more of a want than a need. Well, you can't have the deck and the shed, you get one or the other.
There is some I've noticed up there, they have little bunk houses, maybe one or two up there. So if they would have that, well, they probably wouldn't have room to put a shed in there anyway.
Yeah. It, it is pretty well-built up, and that's about the only thing that really fits in there, is something that's smaller and, and utility-wise.
Thank you. Open forum number two. I assume we don't have a long line waiting. I will close open forum number two and ask for other. I assume...
Did, did we conclude that we're going to put this on the agenda for the next...
I saw Patrick writing.
That, that is, that's, just to give you an idea of what's being constructed on that site that we dealt with the variance on, on Font Lake. That does comply with the, what you passed, and, and we've given them, given them to go ahead to do it. His goal is to get it done by September 15th.
Ah. He's doing it all by hand?
He is doing it all by hand. And you have to go there to see, to believe.
But he might put you to work, too.
Any, any questions or comments on, on that? Do you see everything that we wanted? You know? Yeah. We trust you. Any other?
If, if, if I wanted to wander around some of these areas, I could go with how many of the members of this and not be in violation of...
One other.
One other, okay.
Patrick, I would be glad to take you, too.
You don't count, then?
That's correct.
You're right.
That's the bonus of that.
We're trying to keep you out of trouble, that's all we're trying to do.
Well, we're talking about there's an open meeting law, and if two or more of you get together or have conversations or emails, then that's the violation of open meeting law. We don't, we don't want that. Now, two and two can go together, as long as they never interact, that's always good, but...
It gets a little hairy when two get together and then they talk to a third, and it's, then it goes to the fourth, that gets to be a little bit...
It's called a serial meeting, and which is also against the rules.
I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.